Thursday, October 25th, 2018, I'd like to call a special meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I'd ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Is there anyone wishing to do so?
Um... Please step on.
Is there anyone else? Counselor Dina Tally, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
...to the flag of the United States of America, to the public which stands, "One Nation Under God, Indemnism with Liberty and Justice for All."
Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll?
President Kushner.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Yeah.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donley.
Counselor Donley.
Counselor Fleming.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Scolia.
President.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Warrant for a special meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. A special meeting of the City Council will be held on Thursday, October 25th, 2018. The agenda will consist of the following. There's only one item this evening: Hearing, Classification and Taxation of Property According to Use in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 797 of the Acts of 1979 as amended by Chapter 79 of the Acts of 1983. So, this is for, obviously, tax classification. I'm going to turn this over to our assessors to speak to the information that we've been provided in our packets. Counselors, I'd like to, before a motion gets made, I'd like to give counselors an opportunity to ask questions or provide any statements or feedback. Once they've given their presentation, I'd like to allow counselors to kind of ask as many questions as they need before a petition or before a motion is then put forth. Counselor Green.
My question would be...
Counselor Green, we're gonna let them present first and then we'll jump in.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Well, good evening. My name again, Harold Scheid. We met about a week ago, I believe, and delighted to be back here. Classification hearing is kind of the pinnacle of the work we do as assessors. Joined this evening by two of my colleagues. To my right, George Bogle, an assessor with my firm in the signed city of Pittsburgh. Actually, George grew up in Pittsburgh and lives... I'll let you introduce where you live when your time comes up. And then, finishing the presentation, is my colleague Chris Paquette, the chief assessor for the city of Pittsburgh. So, with that, we'll try to keep our comments brief to allow for any questions you have. Many of you have been through this process before and you're aware that the classification hearing is intended to give the city council an opportunity to see whether or not it would choose to adopt a single tax rate that would be levied across all classes of property, or alternatively, as has been the practice for many years standing, to approve a split tax rate. That is really the sole function tonight, to make that determination and to see if the city continues to split a rate, at what level the city would choose to shift the tax burden onto the commercial property owner to the benefit of the residential property Pittsburgh is among a number of municipalities that does have a split tax rate. Interestingly, you as a city council have chosen over the past years to move towards a single rate, and you're not alone in that endeavor. There are, I would say, most of the municipalities, principally cities, that have a split tax rate are, like Pittsburgh, looking to eventually move to a single tax rate. Pittsburgh, I'll have to say, has been very, very proactive in that regard and has made great strides in moving towards a single rate. The question is, why would the city want to move to a single tax rate? And I think there are a couple of important reasons for that. One, being a progressive community wanting to attract new businesses, it really sends a good signal out there that among the reasons why a business would locate in the city, the tax question doesn't loom out there as something that would serve as a detriment. The second reason is that, given the complexion of the city's tax base with roughly 22% of our assessed valuation in the commercial and industrial classes, it takes about a 5% increase in commercial taxes to yield a corresponding 1% reduction in residential That represents, I think, a pretty stiff penalty for a commercial property owner. And for that reason and the fact that we really want to put forward, as we have in the last several years, a really proactive response to the commercial industry that might consider Pittsburgh as a place to set up shop. What you'll be voting tonight is what we call a commercial shift factor. That shift factor in the city of Pittsburgh was at one point a factor of 1.4, meaning that a very significant shift in tax burden was realized and put upon the commercial-industrial base. Last year, you adopted a tax factor of 1.12. So, 1.4 to 1.12. That, in my mind, represents a really outstanding effort to get towards a single tax rate. What has been recommended, what we're recommending tonight is that you consider a shift factor somewhere in the realm of 1.08 to, I suppose, 1.12 if you choose. If you were to go to a 1.08 shift factor, that would represent about a $200 per year increase to the residential property owner. Each point represents about, each shift point represents about $11 increase. So, if you were to adopt a 1.08 shift factor, the average residential tax bill would be about $3,972. That compares very, very favorably to all the surrounding communities. In fact, a number of our neighbors to the north, east, and west have average tax bills that are now approaching $5,000 to $6,000 per household. With that, I wanted to turn the floor over to George, who will talk a little bit about market dynamics. A lot of good news on that front, not only to you, the city council, but to, I think, any property owner in the city. We, having gone through the Great Recession of the 2005 to 2011 period, we've emerged with, I think, some very, very positive signs. And one of those signs is appreciating property values.
Thank you. Good evening. One of the things that I do is I analyze the sales for this purpose, to know where the values stand in any given community. And this process begins usually sometime around April, and we're just wrapping it up now. It takes several months to really go through this process. In short, what we have found in Pittsburgh this year is an overall increase in single-family values of about 9%. Condos, about 9% as well. Two- and three-family properties, we've seen about 11% increase. Now, this kind of percentage increase does represent a very healthy increase per se. And what it shows is people are buying into the city and they're willing to pay more as properties become valuable. There are less properties, so there's a supply and demand factor that goes with this. On the other side of that, however, commercial and industrial properties only rose by, commercial rose by about 4%, and industrial only by 2.9%. So, there is an incentive to bring values up in the city in terms of commercial-industrial. Doing what we propose, what we're putting out to you folks tonight would help to that, put more demand into commercial properties. So, that being said, people that do own property in Pittsburgh, the good news is that it's, you know, it is more valuable, and when you do go to sell a property, you're obviously gonna get more for it. I've been seeing in certain neighborhoods, values going up. You know, we're seeing a lot of properties in the $300,000 range. Now, that's not the average, but we're seeing a lot more in that range now as well. So, as far as my part, that's pretty much it. It's just to talk a little bit about where the values are heading and where the percentage increases are.
Chris, would you like to talk a little bit about some of the stars out there, the great things that are happening in the city of late?
I get the privilege of actually sharing the good news, which is, one of the things, one of the primary functions of my job is, on the assessing side of things, is tracking building permits and covering the growth that the city's seen. And in the last 18 months, it's been probably the best that I've seen it. The overall values in the city are up $209 million, which is good, because every year we would come in, for the first few years that I was here, and we would always talk about worrying about hitting the ceiling. And if you notice on, in this book, they have a chart which shows the levy ceiling in a graph, and it shows that the ceiling is actually tailing off. So, we're getting some breathing room, which tells us we're going away from the $25 mark and in a positive direction. That's due to the real estate market that we've been seeing. Property values are on a five-year increase, so they've been rising fairly decently for the last five years. And there's been a noticeable increase in investments. In the last 18 months, we've had almost $84 million in permits pulled. That's through our permitting software that we would track it with. And of that, in the past 12 months for this fiscal year, we've picked up almost $36 million in new growth. $21 million of those permits was in commercial permitting. So, a quarter of the permits that have been pulled are commercial. We've seen the redevelopment of almost 350,000 square feet of either vacant or underutilized industrial buildings. We've seen 59,000 square feet of new office space just opened recently. I don't even know if they've had the grand opening yet, but Nursery Lane, which is the redeveloped mill complex behind the Dairy Queen, which they've been in the process of rehabbing. $4 million in new solar projects the last year alone. 10 new commercial buildings in the last year, which is a big investment. There's been increases in buildings throughout the city. 28 single-family homes in the last two years. And another part of this is with the economic development is the 25 demolitions of, you know, to either redevelop areas or remove some urban blight. And there's also been an increase of $5.4 million in the residential growth, which would be based on the new homes that are built, as well as the number of permits. Shows that people are fixing up their homes and putting on additions and investing in their properties. So, we're seeing a lot of positives from the growth side of things as well. Thank you.
With that, we'll entertain any questions you have.
And just to the members of the public who want to speak, please know that before any motion is introduced, we'll have a public hearing. You'll be able to come forth and provide your comments, and then we'll close the hearing and take action. That's it. Counselor Green?
I guess to, Chris, with the last numbers that you mentioned, has it been residential or commercial or industrial that's had the biggest growth in the last 18 months?
On a typical annual basis, we've seen that. The one thing that it's good but it's bad is the highest growth percentage has traditionally been in personal property. We receive numbers by Unitil. They're one of the largest taxpayers in the city. And those numbers come from Unitil. They get checked with the State Department of Utilities, and they give us that number. So, they accounted for about $17 million in growth this year. The problem with personal property is it depreciates faster than typical. If you were to build a house, the depreciation on the house is, you know, 100 years. Well, personal property could be 10 years. So, that $17 million goes into the levy this year, and then next year it's paid by all the residents of the city and all the businesses. It gets spread out. However, the good thing is, is we've been seeing through the pilot program, investments in things like the solar program, where we're picking up a $4 million bill. And because of the pilot, that's being taxed over 20 years. So, the depreciation's a lot lower, and we're seeing a lot more things of that sort that come in. And then, the Nursery Lane project, the newer buildings that, the Cumberland Farms, the research results, beautiful building, by the way, anything from a new gas station. There may have been a gas station, but when you put a new gas station in there, now you have a new building, and you also have a brand-new depreciation schedule. So, you have a building that might have been at 40% depreciated schedule, and it was not that great, so we were taxing it at $400,000. And now, we have a building that we can tax at nearly a million, that next year will be still valued close to a million. So...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Zarella.
So, I just wanted to ask if you could confirm my understanding. You mentioned each point is roughly $11, you said?
That's correct.
So, just hypothetically, we were talking about 1.08. If we went to 1.07, that would only increase the average tax bill by approximately $11?
About $11 to $12.
Okay. That's all. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly.
Yes. Counselor Boishman.
Well, I listened to you talking. I'm really surprised you came out with a recommendation going down to 108 if I heard you right. That really amazes me. I'm surprised. But according to your numbers, and the way I'm understanding the book, and I could be wrong, because I'm no expert, and I don't, I just know how to add and subtract, and I know what I pay, and I know what they're paying out there. Now, if we keep it the same, we're raising the tax bill $170. I'm rounding it off. It's 169.81 at 112. If I'm right, commercial's only going up to $98.62, because the taxes are going up because we passed the mayor's budget. And the industrial's going up to 173.58. The industrial was coming in no matter what, because Chris Stormy, the pot places, marijuana, they were coming in because of cheap real estate, cheap real estate. Now, what I have a hard time with, and I have a hard time to swallow, is nothing has changed since we've been going down. I've been a pro advocate of going down every year. As a matter of fact, my first year here, I wanted to go down 12 points my first year. And everybody looked at me, and they said, "You're crazy. You're out of your tree." And I said, "No, I don't think it's right." But the reason why I'm fighting it today is because we went up on the water bills this year, we went up on the shores this year, the evaluations went way up to $194,000. So, the taxes are going up, but yet, but yet, commercial and industrial lack way behind. They have not gone up. They've gone up 4, you said it yourself, 4%, 4 and 1.2. So, we're paying 78% of the tax bill. Now, my other question, if you can go back to your book, because this is the time to ask you guys questions, so you can explain to me. I guess it'd be page 48, Campesant Property. If I figure this out right, and I want to ask you a question, because you guys are the assessors, and you know you're all over the Commonwealth. If I look at this university, it's got a tax break of 5.0, over $5 million. Has there ever been asked if we can do a dual taxes or a pilot program where they, and I asked the mayor about that, and we talked about it, and the mayor said the same thing, and we were supposed to have a meeting, but I got taken sick, where if we want to change the city of Pittsburgh in the best way, I believe we can change the city of Pittsburgh, if they allow the students from Pittsburgh who meet the qualifications to go to their school, go to the school for free on a pilot program, because they're paying, we're giving them a tax break of over $5 million. And you must see it, they must be doing something in the colleges, because I read a couple of places where some colleges are doing things. And you're all over the Commonwealth, so you ought to know better than me.
Counselor, I don't believe our assessors can talk to Pittsburgh State and free tuition.
No, I'm not asking that.
Do you have a specific question that relates to tax exemption for nonprofits?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're not putting them in this situation. They couldn't possibly answer a question.
Well, he just made a recommendation to the council that we should go down 1.8, that's how you mean, to 8, 4 points. That's what he, I just heard him say that to me and to all of us, and I'm not picking on you. Don't get me wrong.
If I could respond, it was, it's been suggested that in keeping with the city council's desire to move towards a uniform rate, that we come in with some options between 1.08 and the present 1.12 shift factor. We're not advocating for one factor or another, but we're asked to come with calculations of the impact of moving to a lower shift factor within that range. As you know, the decision is ultimately yours as the city council.
So, then, I still can ask questions, right? Page 22, going back to 1992 all the way up to 2016, all the way up to 2019, it's, we're paying more, we're going up to 108.37. Industrial, commercial's gone to 44.09, and commercial is only, I mean, industrial's only gone up 46. We're way up. Nothing's keeping the same with the taxpayers. Nothing. And your chart shows on the bottom line, on the bottom line of that, it's flat. It's, everything's flat. But we keep on going back to the taxpayers and say, "Pay, pay, 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 pay." Don't get me wrong, sir, I'm not picking on you, and I know I'm starting to get excited.
No, I'm not taking it personally.
And I know I'm starting to get excited. But I have to answer to the taxpayers. And I think, and I keep on saying it, this year here is not the year to go down. We should leave it the same because of what happened. What we did as a council, we raised everything. We raised it. And there's only so much money in the pie for the families. We're even charging some of the parents $25 per student to bring their kids to school. That's an extra $250 a year on their tax bill. So, when you say 170, add on that 250. Now, we're up to $500. Is that right? I mean, you know, I'm not a smart man, I'm gonna admit that. I don't know the book like you do and like Marcus does, but I do know one thing. When I open my wallet, there's not too much left in there. And when you're on a fixed income, there's a lot less in there. So, if you can explain that to me, sir, I'll listen, and I'll even put on my rose-colored glasses so I can see everything perfectly like everybody else sees in this world, because I don't see it that way. And I know I used to listen to my mother tell me how beautiful the world was. When I'd come home from school and the kids were picking on me, they'd tell me, "Oh, Paul, you don't understand. You should put on the glasses, you should say, 'Look at the world.'" Well, I'm gonna listen to the world from these counselors tonight, because I don't see it that way tonight. And I went down four years in a row, and I only asked some of the counselors, and I asked Tom, my friend across the aisle, and I asked Sam, and I asked some others, "Don't go down. Let's leave it the same for this year." I'll go down. I got nothing to gain this year. I'm not looking for votes when having an election. So, it's nothing to do with votes. But that's how I feel. You show me how it changed Pittsburgh, and I'll listen to you all ears, but I don't see nothing, because there's a lot more problems in a dual tax rate, a lot more problems. And they don't want me to go into detail, because I get yelled at because I say the wrong things at the wrong time.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Sometimes these meetings are like a major surgical procedure. So, we had the assessing group discuss very good news on the economic front and leave it to one of us to just shoot it down within minutes. I don't wear rose-colored glasses. No one in this room does. No one in this room wants to raise taxes. No one in this room actually is raising taxes tonight. What bothers me is when a city counselor, with the public watching, listens to what was just said, and they believe that we're sitting here tonight gloating over whether we raised taxes 11 bucks here or 11 bucks there. The public has to understand what we're doing tonight. And I apologize for those who have heard me go through this education, but I have to again, because the paper certainly isn't gonna report it right. They never do. And, you know, you've got some elected officials that will go to their constituents and tell them, "We all voted to raise people's taxes ignorantly and incorrectly," because some of them don't even understand how this works either. Every single year, ladies and gentlemen, for the public viewing out there, your tax bill is determined by one major factor, and that is the tax levy increases. The mayor of the city of Pittsburgh decides when he submits his or her budget whether he wants to raise the tax levy up to the maximum amount allowed by the state, 2.5%. Once the council passes that budget, your taxes have gone up on July 1st. The meeting we're having tonight is not to raise your taxes. The taxes were raised with the budget that was passed. And I went through ad nauseam three months ago why the taxes are being raised when you have a $300 million unfunded liability. That's when the taxes get set. The assessors provide this report, and I always look at page 17, and I don't really look at anything else. Page 17 shows us, and credit to Counselor Beazall, former Counselor Beazall, who is a genius in his own right, because he educated me last year on how I'm not looking at this the right way, and he's right. Every year, if the council doesn't do anything, folks, we are at a single tax rate. We don't start at 112, where we were last year. We always start at 100. So, what would 100 be if we did nothing tonight? It would be an average increase of $306 for the residents if we did nothing. What have we done every year for the last 40 years? We've shifted money that the residents would owe on July 1st more towards the businesses. That's what 108% means. For the residents out there, 108 means we're taking 8% of what you would pay overall, and we're giving it to the businesses in the industrial sector for them to pay instead, which creates what is called a dual tax rate. Businesses have a higher tax rate than residents because we shift a percentage. 30-some-odd years ago, 40 years ago, that shift was 40%. We would shift 40% of the tax burden off of residents to businesses. Now, why is that detrimental? Two reasons. When you have a commercial and industrial tax base that is only 20%, and you're shifting 40% of the burden onto them, their taxes are astronomical. If you have a single rate, both sides are charged at the same rate, and taxes are in check for both sides. But we have seen, and there was a comment made, that nothing has changed. That is a comment made when you don't look at the information. The information says on page 12, from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 12, so a seven- or eight-year period, ladies and gentlemen, the total taxable values in, from fiscal year 2012 to now for residents went up 17.2%. They went from 1... They went from $1.7 billion, $1.7 billion, seven years ago, to the current 2 billion. So, residential home values have gone up collectively 17 percent in eight years. However, the commercial industrial sector has gone up 25 percent since 2012, from, if you add commercial industrial personal, from 450 million to 562 million, 100 million. So, the rate of growth overall is more on the commercial industrial side than it has been on the resident side, which is what we want. People in Pittsburgh have to understand, when you get your tax bill every year, you are responsible for 77 percent of the economic pie. So, of course, your bill's going to go up every year when the tax levy is raised, because you make up 77 percent of it. What the council has tried to enact as a policy measure to encourage economic growth and vitality, and no one's ever said it's a cure-all, I have to repeat this every year, no one has said when we hit a single tax rate, utopia will follow and we'll have 80 percent businesses and 20 percent residents. It is one tool in the kit, that we do not help ourselves by keeping at a dual rate. If you look at over 60 communities in Worcester County, we are one of five that have a dual rate. 90-plus percent of this county doesn't have a dual rate. And all the dual rate, the single rate areas have a lower tax rate, granted, their values are higher, but our average tax bill, in the state average, in the county, is at the bottom 10 percent. I'm not saying that people can pay more because of that, but I'm just putting out the factual perspective, that our residents pay, on average, in the bottom 10 percent of what the rest of the county pays. So, there has been changes. In fact, the percentage of commercial industrial personal property was, is 1 percent higher than it was seven years ago, and 1 percent is a big change. As the gentleman here said earlier, for every 5 percent change in the commercial side, it's a 1 percent decrease on the residential side in taxes. We're inching slowly towards that. We are trying to correct an economic policy that I believe our forefathers 40 years ago failed on, because the dual tax rate was created to keep residential tax bills down. The data shows that it did the exact opposite. Have people's tax bills gone down because of a dual rate? No, they've gone up astronomically, because what happens? Businesses leave, and who picks up the slack? The resident. So, that 77, at one point, was a lot less. It's not helped the residents, it's failed them. So, what we're trying to do here tonight, ladies and gentlemen, and don't buy what you heard earlier, is we're trying to incentivize an environment of business growth, so your taxes will stay either modestly on the rise, or at some point, it'll be less of an impact. No one is promising the taxes are going to go down. As I said, this mayor and the next 50 mayors after him are going to raise that levy 2.5 percent, because you, ladies and gentlemen, owe a $285 million unfunded liability. That's why it's happening. This isn't about votes. I've been voting for a single rate for 10 years, and I've gotten first place every election, because I think the majority of residents understand what I'm saying right now. They maybe not like it, but they get it. So, there's been a significant change, and it's, this is the best news I've heard from the assessors' office in 10 years on the council. They just said about the robust growth, about what's been going on the last 12 to 18 months with permits. Anybody who listens to this and reads this book cannot conclude that the city's on the down. So, I'm going to post this document on all my social sites, I know it's on the city website, I encourage residents to read this and ask your counselors questions on what this means, because it's very complicated to understand, but that is what we're trying to do here. Any counselor who votes closer to 100 percent is signaling two things, one, to the business community that we want to be competitive, and one way to be competitive is through the tax rates, and the other message we're sending is to the residents. We're trying to lower the residential tax bill, we're trying to keep the increases modestly in check, by increasing that 22 percent and decreasing the 77. You're not going to do that if your taxes for your businesses are through the roof, you're not. So, there is short-term pain for hopefully long-term gain, that's the strategy. We're trying to lower that 77 percent, and this is the only tool the council has under its control. I know there's issues with unitil and access to the highway, my colleague talked about water and sewer rates. I'm sorry, Mr. President, but it has to be stated very quickly, that the water rates went up because we have 100 miles of piping that is in failure. Unless people want to be Flint, Michigan, we had to raise the rates to fix it. We have the federal EPA, those eggheads in DC who know everything, who forced on us a consent decree with a gun to our head, either do it, or we're going to stiff you with penalties for the rest of your life. That's why the sewer rates went up. It's not because we got together one day and said, you know what, our residents are milking it with the money, they can, they can afford more money. Anyone who pays attention out there knows that's not true. So, let's get that out there right now, because I'm sick and tired of hearing it. So, I will close with this, if we do nothing for the paper, if we do nothing, the residents will see a $300 tax bill increase because of the revenue proposal the mayor submitted. What the council does tonight will lower that 300. If we vote for a 110, the increase will not be 300, it'll be, I'm sorry.
17.
217. So, the council's actions tonight would result in a, if we did a 110, it would be a 192 increase versus 306. So, if we go 110, ladies and gentlemen, we're lowering the increase in residential tax bills from 306 to 193. If we go to a 108, we're lowering the tax increase from 306 to 215. If we go to a 106, we're lowering the tax increase from 306 to 237. I'm pretty sure the residents don't want us to stay at a single rate this year, they want us to keep going slowly every year, slowly, because we understand what we do will affect them now, it'll improve the businesses with the hope that they'll benefit later, and it's a hope, but we've seen through the data, there has been some movement. So, I want to make that perfectly crystal clear. If we, whatever rate we set tonight, that's not 100 percent, it'll be a less of an increase on resident tax bills than if we do nothing, and that should be the write-up in the story, not the, not the council raise people's taxes $192.51 if we go to a 110, no, no, we lowered the taxes by $108, because if we do nothing, they're going to get hit with 300. That's the story, and I can't explain it anymore. Now, I'm very passionate about this, because I've been talking about it for 11 years, and I get so frustrated with this topic, because all people will take away from this, I'm afraid, is they'll look at the bill and they'll stop short, you know, that's it. The bill's up, Pittsburgh's no good, and you heard it from one of them right here tonight. I'm trying to explain to people why we're doing this. We're doing it for the residents' benefit, as weird as that sounds, but if people want to see economic growth in this city, you do it through one avenue called tax policy, and we have failed in that regard for 40 years. We are correcting yet another mistake our forefathers made 40 years ago, we're trying to correct it. And if I lose at the ballot box because of it, then so be it, I'll probably live another 10 years. Thank you.
Counselor Squalia.
So, our tax shift factor, 1.4 percent. What year was that, and when did we start moving down? The last...
There's actually history of the shift factors. Yeah, if we point you to page 13 of the big book.
The big book. Okay.
You can see the history of factors back in 1981, we were at 1.4, and then interestingly, it dropped to 1.25, but then kicked back up to 1.4 again in 1989, and the city is more, well, we've kind of rollercoastered through, through history here, but it's really the last several, several years where...
Since 2004, when it was 1.38, it's kind of been going down.
2007, 2008, we started seeing the march downward, the last several years have really allowed us to make some significant inroads in getting to a single rate.
Yep. So, this FF CV, this is our, is that the, the, the total taxable valuation?
So, that's the percentage, that's the, the raw percentage before shift, the tax shift.
Mm-hmm.
What the residential portion of the assessment base is.
So, our residential portion was 85 percent in 2007, it went down to 80 percent in 2011, '79, 2012, and it's back up from 77, it's now, this year, 2019, at 78 percent.
Yes, that's correct.
So...
But, Counselor, that's the full fair cash value?
Mm-hmm.
If you look two columns to the right, it'll say residential levy percent at shift.
Yep.
That's what they're paying in the portion, for the portion of taxes.
Right, because we have a 12 percent shift currently.
Correct, so their value, the values are 78 percent, but they're paying 75 percent of the taxes, and as you can see, the number, the column to the right of that is the amount that the commercial industrial's paying.
Right, so, we've had a little more residential growth in the past four years than compared to commercial growth.
In the real estate sector, yes.
Yep. Okay. And so, in suggesting a 4 percent shift this year, right, where do you see that comparing to maybe a 2 percent shift? Because I, I do agree that we need to go to a single tax rate, because we want to have a single tax rate to promote business, and this, and eventually, you know, we'll, we'll get there. But, as Counselor Boishman noted, the, the thing that residents see is their bills, they understand of why we want to do that, but that's not important to them. What's important to them is being able to pay their bills, and he's right, the utilities go up, the water went up, the sewer went up, and that went up a fair amount in the past year. And so, in going to 4 percent, you know, we're talking $11 a percentage point for the average property, but it's still more. So, what do you think the difference is going 2 percent to 4 percent, and then like an economic forecast of going, you know what I mean?
I would never venture to say how it translates into actual economic results.
We get the assessed rate, we don't get economics.
I think it was pointed out, and pointed out well, that there are a number of factors that a prospective business looks at in making their decision to come to Pittsburgh. It's location, housing, the, the skill level of the populace, all of those factors, what we're trying to do is eliminate any disincentives in that checkoff list that a business would look at when evaluating one community over another.
Mm-hmm. And we wouldn't be concerned about disincentives for residents, because our tax bills are statistic, are, are less already than our surrounding communities, just not the number. Just not our, our tax rate might be higher, but our tax bill is lower.
So, I try to avoid editorializing, but my sense is that, on the residential side, because the average residential tax bill is, all things considered, quite low.
Compared to surrounding communities.
So, if you're looking to buy a house in Pittsburgh, of course, you have lower values relatively, but along with a reasonable tax rate, your, your hit's going to be as much as $2,000 to $3,000 less per year living in Pittsburgh over, say, one of the surrounding communities.
Right. So, theoretically, you know, going with our shift, we're not increasing the burden compared to our surrounding communities.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All set, Counselor? Counselor Walsh.
I had, I had two questions, and I, and one was to ask the panel if they could give a short explanation of the benefits of the, the single tax rate, but I think Counselor Dina Tally addressed that. And my other question was the comparison of the tax rate with the tax bill, and I think Counselor Squalia just asked that question, so I think I'm, I think I'm all set.
Thank you both.
Counselor Caddy.
Chris, could you explain the personal property tax? Who, who, who pays, who gets a personal property tax in a city?
Personal property tax is anything that's not a fixed real property asset, and it is primarily businesses. So, it could be anything from a mom and pop mechanic to unitil putting in a solar array. So, you have something that's, you know, worth several million dollars, and then you have a mechanic, an auto mechanic who, you know, uses their hand tools for a living. The state of Massachusetts tells us that they're required to pick up the personal property tax for that, so it's basically any equipment that's used in the conduct of business. There are certain exemptions, such as manufacturers, and in, on the utility side of things.
So, I'm just leading that question to get to my next question.
Sure.
So, so, not only is the businesses paying more than their fair share, they're also getting a personal property tax.
That is correct.
So, they're getting two tax bills.
Correct, they're getting taxed for their property and for the equipment that is within the property.
And residents, do they get a personal property tax bill?
No, not unless they own a second home, and the home they own is that second home.
So, to get back to my point, not only do we have businesses paying more than their fair share, but they're also getting another tax bill over and above the property, they're getting a personal property tax bill. Actually, I, that just dawned on me while we were talking tonight, that now you're really talking to businesses. And, so, I just want to make this one statement, you know, how unfair is it to tax somebody who doesn't have the right to vote? We're, we're taxing businesses, and, you know, they don't send kids to school, we don't pick up their rubbish, and we're, we're taxing them, and all we're doing is taking their money. I mean, it seems so unfair to me that we got to this spot, when I got on the council in 03, 2003, it was 138 back then, and, and we've been trying to get, get it down, and I, and I heard someone say, move it 2 points, we're never going to get to the end of this if we don't make some bold moves here. You know, 4, 4 points, it's, it's a step closer, we get, and, and next year, maybe we could get 4 more, but eventually, we got to get it down, if we're going to be successful in the city. That's all, thank you.
Counselor Sorrelli.
Thank you. So, first, I just wanted to ask another clarificatory question. The counselor to my left asked questions about the rate of change in the total tax levy for various categories. I wanted to just, again, confirm my understanding, am I correct in understanding that those percentages, the 100, the 40-some-odd, the other 40-some-odd, those were changes in the total value, not in the rate that we're assessing them at or anything?
So, I... You may be, correct me if I'm wrong, alluding to the movement of our assessed values in response to market conditions, as we've measured them through an analysis of sales, and in the commercial area, we also look at prevailing rents for certain classes of commercial property where you have a tenant landlord relationship. So, all that being said, we have seen greater appreciation on the residential side than the commercial side.
Right. So, the reason we're seeing that, though, is not because we're taxing the residents 100 percent more heavily now, but rather because we've seen dramatic increases in the value of the residential properties, correct?
Ooh, that's a complicated question.
Sorry.
So, you have relative increases in valuation that do play into this whole tax picture here. So, if you were at a single rate, and you have one class of property appreciating to a greater extent than another, there is the potential for a tax shift.
Right, right. But, the tax shift itself relates to the val, the respective values of the property, not that we're hitting them hard, right?
Because we're taxing the value of the property, though, another way to look at this is to recognize that the residential property owner benefited from a market that is more robust in the, on the residential side than the commercial.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, that's, that's pretty much what I was asking, thank you, um, so, this is, there's been kind of a theme since I started running for the council, and since I've been on the council this year, of trying to fix things that never should have gotten to this point in the first place, we've done it with the schools, we've done it with the city hall, it's, the big story is someone tried to kick the can, and now it's coming back to bite us, it's not anyone in this room who did it, none of us were there, um, but someone tried to, because it seemed like a good idea at the time, and it was short sighted, and now we're paying the price, but we need to fix it, we can't leave it broken just because it's going to pinch to fix it, um, because otherwise it's just going to keep getting kicked down the road and getting worse, um, somewhere along the way in the eighties, I'm sure someone who was in government at the time had the bright idea, whether it was sincere or cynical, I don't know, because I don't even know who it was, but someone had the bright idea to say, our businesses are doing pretty decently, our homeowners could really use a tax break, so let's take a bit more from the businesses, they can afford it, right? And our homeowners will have a bit more money each year, sounds great, but clearly it's not, because businesses are rational economic actors as well, if you tell them you can pay X amount in property taxes in Pittsburgh, or X minus ten in Lemonster, what, what would you do? I mean, and so, as a result, the reason our residential taxpayers are paying so much now is because for so long they had become the only significant tax drivers in the city, because we'd driven a lot of businesses away, that's starting to reverse now, and that's great, the busi- we're seeing businesses come into the city, we're seeing businesses develop further in the city, we're even seeing some businesses that we are more or less poaching from surrounding communities, that are saying, we're in Lunenburg and we want to come to Pittsburgh, we're in Lemonster and we want to come to Pittsburgh, and honestly, you ask someone five years ago, I don't think anyone would have predicted that, but we're doing it, um, and we need to keep that up, because the more we can draw the businesses in, it sounds like we're saying to the residents, okay, you guys pay a bit more so that the businesses can pay less, if you compare an individual resident to an individual business, that may be true in the short term, but if you compare the residential tax base to the business tax base, it's exactly the opposite, if we can get more businesses, like councillor Gina Tally said, if we can get that twenty-two, twenty-three percent up, then that means even if the businesses are paying not even a lower rate, a lower shift than we're currently putting on them, they're actually paying a larger share of the city's budget, which means the residents pay less, doesn't necessarily mean tax bills are actually going to drop, that's just not a thing that happens in the modern economy, but we can hopefully forestall increases going forward by getting more business value to drive up the value of the business assessments, without hitting any of them harder, so, let's do the far sighted thing tonight, not the short sighted thing that someone did back in the eighties, again, we're talking eleven dollars per point, now, I understand, twenty-two dollars a year is for some of our lowest income residents, not an insignificant amount, but remember that we're talking eleven dollars average, people who are much lower income aren't going to be paying the average, because they're going to have much lower property values, um, so, if we're talking the difference between, say, going down two and going down four, for the average taxpayer, that's twenty-two dollars a year, and that moves us to a timetable where we're at a flat rate in three years instead of six, if we assume that we drop the same amount the next two years, to me, that just makes sense, even if it only results in a small finger on the scales, in terms of a business's likelihood to come to Pittsburgh, we are, our economy is on a slope and accelerating, I'm making it downwards because I'm talking about velocity, not about direction, uh, we are, we need to keep it moving, we don't want to put the brakes on and start coasting down the slope towards prosperity, we want to take a dive down Granite Street and wind up getting there as fast as we can, uh, this is how we do it, we, we tell the businesses, you know, maybe this isn't going to make a huge difference in your decision, maybe two points, four points, isn't going to be the difference between coming to Pittsburgh or not, but it says, we want your business here, we want to work with you, we want to make this a more attractive city for your business than the rest of the surrounding area, and we're willing to take the tough votes to do that, so, I would support four, I would even go as far as six myself, and get this done in two years, um, because I think it's worth it, and I think that if residents look out three, four, five years, they're going to see the benefit of this, personally, in their own wallets.
Councillor Boishman.
Chris, when you say personal property tax, and you also deny depreciation, was that word in there, depreciation on personal property tax? So if I buy a brand new car, it depreciates ten thousand dollars right off when I drive it off the lot, that's the, that's the, that's what they say, and every year it goes, it depreciate, do you come to a point of zero?
No.
You don't never come to a point of zero?
So long as there's a working life, there will not be, it will never be depreciated to zero.
It won't be, all right, you answered that, I didn't know that, now the other thing, councillors, and listen very carefully, because you heard some good debates tonight, you heard from the councillor on my right, and you heard from the councillor on the left, we have some businesses that moved from this city, from this city, and they moved to a different city, they built a beautiful building, and you know what, in a smaller building, they built, they had a real big building here, but they went to this other community because it was a, uh, it was a different city, and they built a beautiful building but smaller, they paid more in taxes than what they did in Pittsburgh, Massachusetts. I'm telling you tonight, and I'll tell the taxpayers, it isn't the dual tax rate, you hit it on the nose, we lack the necessary skills to compete, that's one of them, there's others things that are a factor, there are a lot more factors than that, councillor Donnelly says it off, how can you have a thriving economy on, based on poor, if you got fifty percent of your people that are poor in the con- in the city, how can you have a thriving economy? I know, I'm Mr. Negative, and I got my rose glasses on again, but I don't understand it, we leave it the same, nobody's getting hurt, you're going, you're still paying the taxpayers, paying a hundred and seventy dollars, the res- the other guy's paying forty-four dollars, and the other one's paying a hundred and seventy-eight, and they're in industrial, they would come in Pittsburgh no matter how you want it, because no community wants to put them in there, if you read the paper, they don't want them in their community, we're the ones that say, come on in, we'll take you, and we have been taking them, and they have invested, and that's the pop places, so they invest a lot of money, but, other things haven't happened, commercial hasn't come, show me, show me where to have, I looked at my Main Street, and there's a couple more going out, so show me, show the taxpayer, God, I know, and the paper shows here a flat line, my book.
Councillor, I, I, I'll weigh in on this, I, I, I think it's been, it was clearly expressed, a growth in both commercial and industrial.
Right.
Over the, councillor, this is, this is not a, this is, councillor, this is not a discussion, I have the floor right now, thank you, you've had your time, this has clearly been discussed, that we've seen growth in both commercial and industrial, that growth preceded marijuana, marijuana came in this year, last year, is that the only two years of growth, it is not, the growth, the growth has started for some time, and that growth has accelerated as that rate has come down, now, that is not the only factor in this, but I look at our community, in Worcester County, we're one of five communities that has a dual tax rate, short of the city of Worcester, I believe is one of those communities, and I could be wrong, short of the city of Worcester, do I want to be one of those other communities? I don't think so, I often hear us, you know, how come our, these neighboring communities in north central Massachusetts have figured it out and we haven't, there's a common thread there, and I'm not saying it's the only factor in there, but we have a dual tax rate, and they do not, we often complain about, why are businesses leaving here, or why have they traditionally left here and gone there, why does Lemonster have this thriving commercial base, and we don't, well, for forty years, we disproportionately treated businesses, we treated them, we treated them poorly by them being at a one point four percent shift factor, we kicked the can down the road, I would go further, I'd say we shot ourselves in the foot, and then we expect that to change in four years, forty years of bad behavior, and we're going to make it up in four years or five years, I don't think so, that takes a long time of showing the business community that we're serious, and the fact that we're debating this tonight tells the business community, you know, maybe we're not serious, now we're pump, we want to pump the brakes, we've talked about for the past five years, decreasing it steadily and moving in that direction as a show of good faith to the business community, and now we want to halt that, and say, maybe, maybe we're not sure, at the, at the first, at the first sign of, of pause or concern, we're going to stop our path and course reverse, that's indicative of a community that doesn't know how to conduct business, and doesn't know how to interact with businesses, I think that would, that would be the worst show of faith, and that would be one of those negative indicators, saying that we're a business, and we're a community that doesn't know how to interact with the business community, and doesn't look at long range projections and consistency. I also look at, you know, I'm getting this general sentiment of, who cares about the businesses, why, why should we, and these ideas of these Fortune five hundred companies, we're not talking about Fortune five hundred companies in Pittsburgh, we're not talking about, you know, the, the average, you know, sure, we have, we have several large companies in Pittsburgh, the average company, the average commercial property that's going to be affected, we're talking about dry cleaners down the road, we're talking about our, you know, independent cleaners, and our, you know, uh, crystal cleaners, and our art gallery downtown, or our, um, you know, clothing stores in the downtown, those are the ones we're talking about, those affect us in two ways, they leave, those are tax dollars that have to be paid by someone else, and two, if they leave, that's a quality of life issue for residents, you know, how often do people say, I wish we had more options to go out to eat, or do this, or do that, I hate having to get in the car and go to Lemonster, or to go to Lunenburg, we don't want them to do that, that's a quality of life issue, and they're forced to choose, do I, do I leave and go somewhere else, or do I just not do it at all, that's grinding on residents, that's not providing them a good quality of life, which then in turn impacts businesses down the road too, because we're not able to provide a good quality of life, so, while this is one factor of many that impact our ability to remain attractive and competitive, it also impacts many of those other areas, this is a smart move for us, we've been moving in this direction before, I don't see a reason for pause, we just heard some of the positive things we've been waiting decades to hear, we're finally hearing them, I don't understand why we'd pump the brakes now, this is the time to say, I think it's working, this is time to double down on our approach, and say, it's working, we need to move forward, push on, and then once we, once we get to a singular rate, then we need to move on and continue to address those other factors. I think, um, you know, whether it's a, whether it's a four point shift or a six point shift, it is, it is prudent for us to continue on that path towards a singular rate, councillor Donnelly.
Thank you, I've been paying taxes before Proposition two and a half came in, and since then, I still, this country was founded on, because of revolt taxation without representation, let's just pretend, people at this table, that the women are going to pay more taxes, higher tax rate than the men, they're outnumbered here, so, they always do it, now you take the companies, all the businesses, how could Boston make a, a law that's fair to say businesses pay more, it puts one class of person to pay for everybody else, and that's what Pittsburgh adopted many years ago, I still don't understand why anybody in their good conscience can say, you should pay more money than me, I don't understand how Boston could make that a, a rule, but they did, and the only community in this, in our area, any, any of the commu- towns or cities next to us, we're the only ones that adopted a split rate, and it's, it's bounced like a rubber ball, you know, you never know what people are going to say, I like the word you used, progressive, and, uh, and it does make a difference, but as long as we have a split rate, we have a split rate, if it's one point to split rate, I still can't see why one group of people has to pay a different rate than other people, and the majority of people are not big companies, they're mom and pops, what was, what would you say the average amount of employees on these small, that, some of the people that work in eighteen hours a day where someone else is working eight hours to make the same amount of money, because they want to be independent, but then, they're not all big co- companies, they're not all big corporations, I think that's one of the, one of the biggest things, but this big discussion here, and I tried to break it down, to the average, you used eleven dollars per point, if we're talking four points, it's an average of forty-four dollars a year, like, I pinpointed a couple, you know, we have a, a high of a hundred and a low of thirty, just sitting at this table, so, if it's forty-eight dollars, it's approximately a, a dollar a, a week, close to a dollar a week, I don't know how a dollar a week's going to affect most of the people, and I still can't see why we have to ca- let's, let's show that we mean business, we want to attract middle class and wealthy, those are the people that pay taxes, we want the three hundred, the four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar houses, there's people sitting in the crowd right now, they say, I can't find a house that I want, because we don't have the high end houses, they pay the big taxes, and everyone else is supporting the smaller, the lower end taxes, we have to increase our middle class and our, our top tax paying in residential, and when some of those things come in, there'll be more, but we have to lay the groundwork, and it's eleven people, eleven people here that can do it, that's it, thank you.
Councillor Gina Tally.
I just want to point out some facts here from page, um, thirty-six and forty-seven, when, in nineteen eighty-one, the rate shift was one forty, forty percent, so we shifted forty percent of the levy from residents to businesses, when we first instituted this dual tax rate, our, our free and fair cash value, our, our valuation for homes made up fifty-nine point four percent of the tax base in nineteen eighty-one, nineteen eighty, fifty-nine point four percent of our tax base was residents, and the rest were businesses, forty-one percent, after forty years of a dual tax policy, starting in, going all the way from nineteen eighty to two thousand and eight, our home valuations went from fifty-nine percent of the base to eighty-four percent of the base, no one in this room, nor in my ten years here, has ever said that this is the sole determining reason why we have challenges, but it's a factor, and it's not ill conceivable, inconceivable to assume that the moment we instituted a dual rate, our residential tax base went from fifty-nine percent to eighty-four, what happened to the forty point percent of the businesses? It's now twenty-two, that is all you need to understand about why a dual tax rate has killed this city, has assisted in hurting this city, hurting the residents and their wallets, this discussion always centers around, I hate talking about, well, it's only an extra twenty dollars a quarter, I don't like phrasing it that way, because that makes it look like we're insensitive, I'm trying to make the residents understand that when the dual tax rate was instituted, up until now, the tax base on businesses dropped by fifty percent. 50%. Who took, who, who covered the 50% drop? The residents. We're trying to course correct. We're trying to, in creating an environment where people don't have to shoulder over 3/4 of the pie like they didn't have to 40 years ago. So again, from 41% now to 22, that's what the dual tax rate has helped do. And if you go from '08 to now, when we made a progressive move to change that, the business valuation as total tax base went from 15.7% to now 22. It's gone up 7% since 2008, when we started this progressive policy. Those are the only stats you need to know of why this is important, why we're trying to do this. We're trying to get back to 40%. Hell, we're trying to get to 25%. The dual tax rate has failed the taxpayers of Fitchburg, plain and simple. We're trying to correct it, like we're trying to correct a lot of things nowadays. I felt like, I feel like I've been putting out fires since 2008, when I first came on, because this city was managed poorly for 40 years. So that's, that's that factor. The other fact I want to point out, from page 36, from 2008 to 2019, a 12-year period, to defeat the argument that this is actually hurting residents even more, in terms of moving back to a single rate, the average single, the average residential tax bill from 2008 to 2019, we instituted this progressive policy, has only gone up $107.50 on average a year. Businesses have gone up 232, industrial 453. Not even close. So statistically, data-wise, the businesses and the, the businesses, commercial, industrial, have been paying more on average a year than the residents, while shifting back to a single rate. Again, over a 12-year period, the average increase, if you go from $3,927 they pay now, to the 2637 they were paying in 0, in 10 or 9, around there, over that period, if you divide it by the number of years, the average increase was $107 versus 233 for the businesses and 453 for industrial. So I don't know how many more ways till Sunday I can point out from this book, how this has helped, it is not cured, and why this is great news overall about our growth. Let me ask you gentlemen a question. Does the, the game on complex in west Fitchburg, is that factored in here at all? Or is that not done yet?
Game on is in the process of, we, we did see some growth in the land use change, from it being just raw rural land to what will eventually be a commercial use for the soccer complex. However, we found prior to setting the values that they're just not far enough along. So this year, we picked up minimal growth, but probably close to half a million dollars. And once the complex is completed, it'll be probably, you know, at least five to sevenfold of that, if not more, in growth. So next year, we'll be picking up, hopefully, if they, they
Millions.
Millions, yeah.
So that one property alone is going to add millions to the commercial tax base. That's what happens when you have new development. That's not in here. So that's only one piece, not including all the development going on in the city. There are factors here that we're not calculating, because the projects aren't done. That's what's going to improve this even more. So I, I want people to understand, we talk about, well, should we go to a 110, or should we go to a 108, or should we go to a 106? It's too fast, it's too slow. Oh, I don't want to look like I'm saying the residents can afford it. Who cares if they can or can't afford it? I don't want that to be the discussion. Every one of us should sit here and say to ourselves, if we want to be honest with the taxpayers and honest with the public, I will tell my constituents that if I chose to go to a single rate tonight and speed it up and just say, I'm done with this, you would have paid $360 on average a year. My vote tonight, whether it's 106, 108, 110, or 112, is a vote for you not to pay as much of an increase as you would have if we had a single rate. If we want to be insensitive, we just say, to hell with it, we're going to a single rate tonight. No one here is advocating that. So whether we go to a 106, 108, 110, or 112, they'll be paying less as a result of our decision than if we chose to do nothing. That's the story. That's the story. I can't emphasize that enough, ladies and gentlemen. That's how you phrase it, because that's the fact. You don't say, oh, what's another 20 bucks? It's 306 to either 237, 215, 192, or 170. If you take a poll of all the residents in this city, what would they vote for? Would they vote for the 306? They may vote for the 112. They may vote for the 110. But I'll tell you right now, I've been voting this way for 10 years. Hasn't affected me. I mean, I think majority of residents in this city get what we're trying to do, because they understand we're correcting a wrong, with the only motivation to benefit them and their wallet. And I'm glad the President mentioned, as did Counselor Donnelly. When we talk business, I know we live in a world now where business needs to be shunned. Businesses employ people. I am in a company right now where there's a lot of blue-collar workers who are not wealthy, who rely on those businesses to give them a paycheck. And a lot of these small businesses, they don't pay their employees a ton. This affects people too, because people are businesses, all right? They're not some unknown entity. So we're trying to help them out. And by doing so, we're trying to help the residents out. It's just painful right now, because we're trying to make, correct the screw-up we made 40 years ago. So I'm willing to take the political heat for that, but I'll be honest, I haven't yet, because I think the majority of the public understands, if you explain it clearly to them, what we're trying to accomplish here. When has any of us ever said, let's jack taxes up on the residents? No one's ever said that. And that's why I talk this way. I'm so passionate about this, because this whole discussion gets so mutilated and distorted by the press and by other elected officials, that it makes me sick, because it's not the truth.
Counsel Green.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we move from 1.12.
Counselor, we need to, we need to do a public hearing at this time, so I'm going to ask our assessing crew if they would kindly vacate the table in front. And I'd like to, to ask, at this time, if there are any members of the public wishing to speak. Ms. Asmento.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Council President, and members of the City Council and other city officials. For the record, my name is Roy Asmento. I am President and CEO of the North Central Massachusetts Chamber of Commerce. We are a private, nonprofit business association, economic development organization, based right here in Fitchburg, and comprised of about 1,000 members, mainly small and mid-sized businesses, including many here in, in the city of Fitchburg. First of all, I want to thank you all for your work in recent years to improve the business climate here in the city of Fitchburg, both for existing businesses, as well as new businesses looking to come into the community. I would also like to thank the mayor and his administration for their efforts in making economic development a priority. Thank you for that. It's clear that Fitchburg is open for business, as like, as the mayor likes to say. And development has gained a positive momentum, which grows stronger every year. It's really positive to hear those numbers earlier from the presentation. There are a number of directions from which the city might approach economic development. However, shifting property taxes towards a single rate is among the most effective methods of illustrating that a community is truly committed to growing its commercial tax base. It's one of the few things that this body really has, has, has an ability to really help support the business community, help support economic development, and support helping local businesses. You don't have control over energy costs, healthcare costs, workforce, but taxes is something that this council can, can impact. And a single rate really benefits employers and residents alike, as a reduced commercial tax burden attracts further investment and helps create jobs. A vibrant local economy also raises property values, increasing the borrowing power of local homeowners. And you're certainly going to hear arguments from some that business owners can afford a higher levy, that taxes, these taxes can prove a serious hardship to local storefronts. You know, we're a community that has mainly small and mid-sized businesses. We don't have a lot of the Fortune 500 companies. And in an age when international competition between manufacturers is increasingly fierce, can also place an additional obstacle in front of entrepreneurs, who might otherwise be attracted to this region's skilled workforce. Last year, in the last few years, this council has recognized these facts and has voted to narrow the gap between residential and commercial rates. We would encourage you to continue that trend today, and voice your ongoing support for Fitchburg's business community in making this city more competitive. We look forward to working with the city of Fitchburg as a partner in growth, and I want to thank you for your time on this very important economic development issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
Good evening, councilors, mayor, city officials, members of the public. As many of you are aware, my name is Christopher McDermott, and I'm the Public Affairs Manager with the North Central Massachusetts Chamber of Commerce. As a President and CEO, Roy Asmento just mentioned, we are a regional business organization that represents roughly 1,000 employers across 17 communities. Located in the center of northern Worcester County, this city has long, has long led the area in terms of business, population, and political clout. This has allowed the city of Fitchburg to attract a state university, construct a major public transit hub, and develop a thriving city center spotted with shops, restaurants, cafes, and theaters. Unfortunately, at some point over four decades ago, your predecessors chose to broke with their neighbors and move away from the single tax rate. The results could not be clearer. Businesses took this decision as a sign that the city was indifferent to their needs and concerns. Many who already resided here relocated, while others who were considering investing here chose to invest elsewhere. The city's once bustling downtown came to be overshadowed by its counterpart to the South, and investments that would have otherwise come to this city, increasing the tax base and eliminating the need to raise taxes further, decided to direct themselves elsewhere. Fortunately, in recent years, Fitchburg has been led by a mayor and city council that have recognized this challenge and faced it head-on. They have made it a priority to cultivate the city's business community and welcome entrepreneurs who wish to join that community. At the heart of this effort has been a steady move back towards the single rate. And the results are once again self-evident. The city has attracted major amusements like Great Laurel Lodge. Developers have converted unused mill space into luxury housing apartments in the yarn works mills. And nightlife has begun to return to the downtown in the form of small businesses such as Apodacochina and River Sticks Brewery. Last year, the council took the historic step of narrowing the gap between residential and commercial rates by four points. Tonight, we ask you to continue this trend, signaling to the current and future businesses that this body is opposed to unfair tax practices that penalize employers. Doing so creates jobs, it supports local employment, and expands the city's tax base. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bohart, good evening.
Good evening, councilors. Mary Jo Bohart, Economic Development Director for the city. And I, I'm not going to repeat any of the things that have already been well-articulated by many of you, but I do want to acknowledge a few things about this moment in time that Fitchburg is at. It's a very exciting moment in time. As you know, we've gone through an economic development strategic planning process over the past year and a few months, and that has revealed some real opportunities of what we wish to do as far as growing our economy and so on. We're very well-positioned to propel the city forward, but competitiveness is one of the things that we also learned about during that process, how we stack up relative to other communities in our region and beyond. So it's partly retaining the businesses we have, very important, and also recruiting or attracting new ventures. And I, I commend the council for showing the, the discipline and the commitment to that gradual transitioning down of that shift, so that the business community can feel appreciated, those which are here. And anyone who's looking at our city, and I can assure you, there are several different parties that I deal with on any given month that are considering coming to this city. And it's a really terrific signal to say we're open for business and be able to show that the, the city council through the tax rate is also aligning with that. So I just commend you all. I know it's a very difficult balancing act with all the constituents that you represent, but this trend has been very beneficial, and we're positioned at a very exciting time to really capitalize on the commercial growth ahead. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Mr. Skrowski, good evening.
Good evening. Tom Skrowski, Director of Planning and Community Development. I had a big speech planned, but I don't want to belabor the point, because it seems like the council here gets it, and gets the need to really create a comparative advantage as opposed to a disadvantage for the city. I think Counselor Squallie is absolutely right in that the average residential tax bill here is comparatively lower than others in the region. And Counselor Dean Tally and others also mentioned the commercial tax rate comparatively is significantly higher and compared to any of the communities in Worcester County. We're at a disadvantage here, and I think it's in our best interest to move things closer. I think Counselor Dean Tally made a great point in terms of, we've got to do other things as well. This is not a silver bullet. I appreciate you all using this tool in your toolbox to help us become more business-friendly and to support new commercial and industrial development in the city. And I would just further advocate that you continue to support the other things that we're doing to make the, the same things happen, whether that's our demolition program, dealing with vacancy and blight, whether that is soon to be, you'll be seeing some of long-held vacant properties in the city being put up for RFP to get them out for developers and bringing them back on the tax roll. We've seen the work we've been doing with NOKEG, or the Fitchburg Arts Community renovating old buildings, or the marijuana facilities, which have been a huge boon to the commercial tax revenue for the city. And we're currently working both in the east and west on the Lagoon and the Sandpit site respectively, looking to create new growth in the city, which is really our biggest engine for really bolstering our tax base. So thank you for your continued support in this one element that you guys have a ton of control over, but look forward to partnering with you on further things, both above and beyond this move towards a single tax rate, which is absolutely crucial for our competitiveness as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? All have been heard. I do believe the hearing closed. The matter is now before the council.
I'd like to make a motion to move from current tax rate of 1.12 down to 1.06.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to set the shift factor at 1.06. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Dean Tally.
Speaking on the motion, just to clarify Counselor Green's motion, we're, we're shifting 6% of the tax levy from the residents to the businesses. We're going from 100 to 106. Not, 112's not the starting number.
Thank you, Counselor Dean Tally.
Thank you.
Counselor Squallie.
I'm concerned with going with a 6% shift, right, right off the bat. Historically, from 2014, we've shifted 4%, one year, 2%, 2%, 4% last year, and then just a 6% shift this year, with all the additional burdens that the residential taxpayers have been paying. The, the residential, you know, tax bills have gone up hundreds of dollars over, you know, the last year, when this same discussion was occurring. The tax bills went up significantly. And in that time, you know, we've, we've also raised the water bills multiple times, the sewer bills multiple times, and of course, I'm sure the electric rates have gone up. So 6% feels too drastic to me. 2% feels better, but 4% seems reasonable as well. Thank you.
Counselor Zarella.
I'd just like to, again, just reiterate. First of all, the numbers we've been hearing are for the average homeowner, the person who owns a property of average value. A person who owns a less valuable property, who is more likely to be one of our lower-income residents, will see a lesser increase than any of the numbers we're talking about here, proportionally. That being said, the average increase, if we are talking about the difference between 104 and 106, I mean, 106 and 108, is $22 per year. I'm not saying there are no residents in this city for whom that would be a pinch, but the ones for whom it will be aren't the ones who are going to, who are at the average. They're the ones who are below average and will be seeing less than a $22 They're the ones who are below average and will be seeing less than a $22 increase. So I think, as far as property value, actually, I'm probably roughly somewhere maybe a little above average, maybe a little below, I don't know. But $22 a year, especially $22 a year this year, for the promise of lesser overall increases five years down the road, I'll open my wallet tonight and, you know, and I'm not going to give it to him, but that is an increase that can be handled very easily by the average city income. So I think we need to look at it in terms of the faster we get this flat, the faster the business community rebounds, and the faster the residents see the benefit of this, both from a boosted economy in general and from lesser necessity to raise their overall tax levy year over year. If we go slower tonight, we save you $22 this year. That means your year-over-year increase the next few years is going to be greater than it otherwise would have been. Overall, it's a question of more money in your pocket one year, $22 more money in your pocket one year, or an accelerated economy that's going to benefit you in the long term. I'm very much in support of the 106 and, you know, like Counselor Dean Italian said, if anyone disagrees, I'm running next year. So I'll stand by it.
Counselor Boishman.
I'm not in favor of a 106 shift. I'm not in favor at all. I want to point out again to the council that we've already shifted since I've been on the council approximately a million dollars from the commercial CPI to the residential. If we go down to a 106, my fellow citizens pay $237.91. The commercial aspect of it goes to a minus $321, and the industrial goes down $600. That's, and that's what the book says. Paul doesn't make the numbers up, it's right there. Again, I'm going to tell you that if we stayed at 112, nobody still gets hurt. And you get this fantasy that they're moving out of Pittsburgh because of dual tax rate. When they went to Lancaster and they're paying more taxes what they did in Pittsburgh, money-wise, money-wise. They build new buildings, and they put them in Lancaster, and they pay more money. So it isn't the dual tax rate because they just went to Lancaster and they put a brand-new building, and they paid twice as much, and they had a bigger building over here. So you tell me, is it really the dual tax rate? Or is it something else? That's all I'm saying. Thank you, I'm not in favor.
Counsel Walsh.
I just wanted to comment on what Mary Jo Bohart said. I think that we're at a point in time where we have to take advantage of all of the other things that we're doing as well, all of the economic development that we've been planning for downtown. And I think that going to the 1.06 makes sense in terms of promoting commercial development. I think the more commercial development you bring in, in the long run, it's going to reduce the burden on the resident, and I think that that's the way that we have to go.
Counsel Donnelly.
Thank you. I just, I like Counselor Dean Italian's presentation to say, we really should start at zero and see how much business is subsidizing the residents. And to Counselor Boishman, in his logic representing residents and people that pay taxes, I know you have small businesses in your ward, and other small businesses all over the city. I don't know how anybody in good conscience can go and say, have to go around and say, "Thank you for subsidizing my taxes." I mean, there's no, I don't see any logic. I don't think there's anything in faith and equality to have small businesses subsidize anybody else. So I'll go along with 106.
Counselor Dean Italian.
This is going to shock everybody, but I will not go along with 106. I think it's too fast. And I don't want people who've listened to me all night to think, "What's he talking about? After what he just said?" I've always voted without even batting an eye for 2% move, and I voted last year for the 4%. I was perfectly willing coming in here tonight to go to 108. Not even hesitate. 106 is too fast. And I know it's only $22 difference, but I feel it's a little more equal across the board by going to 108, and it's a precedent we set last year. It's up to the council, but I always came in here ready to vote yes on either 110 or 108. I never even thought of going to 106. I guess both sides can make the argument, "What's the difference between 108 and 106? What's the difference whether we go from 108 or 106? You know, it's only $22." But it's the optics of it. We've always done 2%, and then we did 4% last year, and I was prepared for that. I wasn't prepared for 6%. I think it's too fast. Even at 108, the commercial average bill goes down 182, and the industrial goes down 342. So my no vote tonight on 106 should not be construed as, "I'm against moving towards a single rate." I am for moving towards a single rate at four points, which is a lot faster than we've done historically. I mean, if we go to 106 tonight, then we might as well be prepared to tell everybody next year, "We're going to go to 100." I mean, the way I look at it, it's one more year, and I never said that this is a cure-all. And I heard the argument that we were trying to speed things up. It takes a long time. If we go to a 108, and then a 104, and then a 100, we'll be at a single rate in two years. I never even thought I'd be saying this 10 years ago. Two years versus one year if we go to 106, and I can guarantee you'll probably go to 100 next year because the same council will be here. I think it's fair to assume that. The same council will be here. The same councillors who vote yes on 106 will probably vote for 100 next year. Okay, fine, but I didn't expect the 106 because I figured, what's two years? 10 years ago, we were thinking 20. So we've really gone full bore on this, which is great, but I thought 4% was always healthy. I was surprised we even did 4% last year, let's put it that way. So 106 kind of caught me off guard, considering the history of these votes. So I can't support a 106. I will only support as low as 108. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to set the shift factor at 1.06. All those in favor, please raise.
It's a roll call.
Roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Dean Italian?
No.
Counselor Donnelly?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Caddy?
Yes.
Counselor Squallion?
Nay.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
That would be a sweet no.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Motion.
Vote of seven to three. Move to adjourn?
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, councilors. Please remember to sign the document with the assessors.